I'm so sorry, I can't hear you.
I called the meeting to order and it is now 7:04.
7:04.
Okay, just remind me.
Yeah, okay, thanks Pam.
We'll have to do roll call because Pam Dickerson is on Zoom tonight, so Pam.
I'm here.
Pat Olson. Rafa. Bill. And I'm Pat Gales and I'm here and our liaison to the Board of Selectmen, Ken Pacheco. Is present. Okay, so all votes will have to be due by roll call tonight. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Thank you. Okay, the first item on our agenda tonight is the budget. And I sent you two documents. One is our history of spending that we looked at at our last meeting and another one is the projected expenses that I could put together given, you know, what we had talked about throughout the past couple of months. Rafa and I also met with Mike Mullin yesterday and talked about our budget, so we have some information to share about that. First, if we want to take a look at the the budget planning, one that shows the three years FY '20, FY '21, and FY '22, you can see our pattern of spending is that we've never really spent all of our budget. And FY '21 was COVID, during COVID kind of shut us down, as did the end of FY '20, so we're only spending about 50% of our budget in each of those years. So when we went and requested the $2,000 from the Finance Committee and they recommended $1,000, they basically cut it, they cut it in half, and when you look at the figures, you can see the, understand the reasoning why, it's because we never really fully spent our budgets. So one of the things that we're battling or we have to be very cognizant of is the history of spending for the Historical Commission. So Rafa and I talked then, so that leads into our projected spending, what kinds of items are we spending our money on? So if you look at the projected expenses, it came up to a total of $1,705. This is, you know, based on what I looked at through all of our minutes, what kinds of things we were thinking about spending, what we needed to work on. The Boston Post Cabinet repair, we've already spent about $25 on it and I figured another 50 maybe to finish repairing it, so that would come under the equipment and repairs. At our last meeting, we voted for the Commission members to be reimbursed the $25 if they register for the Massachusetts Preservation Conference, so that would be 150. Communications, we have mailings that we have to do, so that would be about $20. We had also talked about a brochure for the National Register District and I kind of roughly estimated that for 250 copies to be about $180. When we get into the other supplies, we talked about the James Briggs Garden Plaque. The prices ranged from $225 to $600, so I just picked the mid-range of 300 for estimating purposes. We also talked about waiting to see how the garden develops. The James Briggs House Plaque, that'll go in Town Hall. We had an estimate between 50 and $100, so it would be, I said 75, based on what Gales had told us. Pam was researching the Boston Post King Stand, she estimated between 150 and 200 for that. A table covering for our events. It says the Dayton Historical Commission. 100, I estimated 150 to 155. Then I thought, oh, we should have an old historical marker on Old Town Hall, so like with the houses that we're doing, it's a building, so that would be 125. Office supplies, we need binders to place documents in minutes as we're working on with our preservation consultant in the upcoming fall. We'll probably need some binders to put materials in and also manila envelopes for shipping. So that was 125 in office supplies. Anticipating that the Firecracker Festival is going to be again next year, we would want to have something to hand out, so I said, oh, probably based on what we spent, we have pens left over, another $250 for something else to hand out then. So the total for other supplies would be $1,230. Travel, I kind of figured we'd probably have to pay some mileage if someone's going to be traveling around town with the consultant, so that the mileage is taken care of. So the total would be $1,705 of anticipated expenses.
Was there, and I agree with everything you've said so far, but then we went to the Aggie School to talk about our display. Was there any consideration made for how much money we would be spending on that?
No, not at this time, yeah. You know, so that is a consideration too. So keep that in mind. So in talking with Mike, the Town Administrator the other day, we went through it and he looked at it and then I said, oh, the possible, we talked about possible deductions to get us to the $1,000. So you take away the brochure for the National Register Districts, the James Briggs Garden Plaque, we had talked about waiting to see what the garden looks like and then that could even go into FY '23, if not the end of FY '22. Old Town Hall marker, as nice as it would be to have that, that could wait. The binders. Again, you know, that would be nice, but we can do without at this point and that would bring us to the $1,000. So Mike went, you know, we went through all these figures with Mike and he suggested that we should show the town that we are spending our money, spend all of our $1,000 and if we need more money to go to the June Special Meeting, Town Meeting, the one that they have before the annual Town Meeting, because at that point you will know exactly how much more you need to finish the fiscal year, we would need to finish the fiscal year and and be able to put that on the warrant. So thoughts? Bill?
Well, 1705 projected, where'd you come up with that number?
On that piece of paper?
Well, at least these are projected, okay, projected expenses of all of these things that the guidance block, all that stuff has to be funded.
These are
FY '22, right?
These are things that we talked about throughout our meetings, these are items that we've talked about spending and buying. So it was anticipated that they would come out of FY '22. We only have $1,000 right now in FY '22 to spend, so we need to target that figure first. And then we have to determine if we are going to go back for more funding, how much more funding would we need? We talked about in June, before we went to Annual Town Meeting, that we would go to the Special Town Meeting if we needed more funding. Special Town Meeting is now scheduled for November 1st. The warrant closes on September 9th, so we would have to have a warrant article ready by September 9th saying how much more funding we would need. At this point in time, we've only spent $24.79. So to go, so what Mike was recommending to us is that to go and ask for more money right now when we haven't expended what we have, we would have a better, a clearer picture of how much more money we would need and we will also be establishing a pattern of spending that we are using our budget.
Well, why haven't, well, that's probably not the question, why haven't we spent $1,000 by this point? Or if you're finding, are you finding to spend $1,000 before requesting more money?
Yes.
And do we have any idea?
Yes.
What that $1,000 is going to spend on, is going to spend on these items?
These are the items that we, as the Commission, have discussed, yes.
Okay, yes. Are these FY '22 items though?
We're in FY '22, yes.
So, is, all right, so 1705 is more than $1,000.
Right.
So we need, is the deficit $705.
If we spend, yeah, if we determine after we've spent throughout the year, we determine that we need this money, we can go and ask for it at the June Special Meeting.
But this, I'm confused on FY 5, if this, these are projected expenses for
For this year.
For this year.
We're in FY '22.
Right, so we've already estimated bigger than what we have left, basically, right? We only have $1,000 left and this is supposed to be, these things here, these estimates, supposedly it's supposed to be spent in FY '22, right?
These are our projected expenses, so we may, you know.
They could go into, I'm sorry, yeah.
So what we need to really do is prioritize our spending, to spend our budget and then take a look, keep close, a very close eye on it and then take a look as to when the warrant opens for the June Special Meeting, do we need any more and how much more do we need? At this point in time, if we went to the November Special Town Meeting, we can't say how much more we need with definitive reasoning. Does that make sense?
Sure. What's the most money that the Commission's ever requested, you know?
The most ever that the Commission's ever requested?
Must be on the sheet because
As far as I know, and since I've been here, the $2,000 is the most money that, the $2,000 that we requested for this year was the most that's ever been requested.
We only got $1,000.
Correct. We have a, there's, we're trying to move forward and we're trying to do the things that a Historical Commission will do that needs money and we are much more active, we have a lot of plans, a lot of, a lot of fire, you know, things in the fire. So I think it'll all work out as we move forward in a positive way.
And you're gonna, at the Town Meeting, were from one that we would request money, right? Did you say that you were going to request $1,000?
No, not yet.
We don't know whether
No, because right now we're talking about Special Town Meetings where you'd have to put a dollar amount on the warrant. For the November Special Town Meeting, we are unclear how much more we would need because we haven't really spent anything as of today. So keep going forward, it comes to April and May, we look at what our expenses are, what we've spent our money on, how much is left and what do we need? And then at that time, if we determine that we need more money, we go to the June Special Town Meeting to ask for that.
Pat, may I, it's Pam.
Yep.
I know some of the things on that list that Pat Olson and I have gotten quotes on, for example, the tablecloth. I mean, that could be ordered even tomorrow. Well, not tomorrow, you know, we need to approve all that, but we have quotes to quickly kind of, I don't want to say, you know, spend our money, but yeah, spend our money, you know? It's hard to estimate the sign at this point, I know you have estimated all of it, but let's, let's try to put in orders as quickly as possible for the items that we definitely know. Maybe another 250 for Firecracker, the tablecloth. And, and as Pat just brought up, the plaque for Aggie, because our other fear was when Rafa, Pat Olson, myself toured over there, I think that if we don't move forward with putting a small display in that school quickly, we might lose our opportunity, just because it's a new school, they're quickly decorating and I, you know, I don't know if that's forefront in the mind of the powers that be over there. Would you kind of agree, Rafa and Pat Olson, that maybe? That was the feeling I, I got during our meeting, so I, I think that if we can get the committee together to find a nice picture, which we're, we're in the process of and seeing how much that would cost to nicely frame or, you know, they kind of transpose it on a plaque with a local vendor, that again is
I think that the Aggie School discussion is on the agenda for our regular September meeting, so we will discuss that.
Okay, I apologize.
Expenses are, are just that, they're projected, they can change because we don't know what's going to happen, you know, as with any budget planning. So the main intent that we were meeting tonight to discuss the budget was to see if we wanted to go on the November 1st warrant. So
Well, if we can spend, I guess we would, it would be crucial that we do, right?
Not for November, because we have to have our money item in by September 9th.
Got it.
So, we're not, so I think we just have to really be cognizant of what we're doing and not, and have something every month that we're looking at carefully budget-wise, is, is it, where is it on the priority list and, you know, what is the cost for it, so? All right, do I, I don't need a motion or anything, do I, Ken, or?
No, at this point I'm happy with that. I assume that Rafa is in agreement with this, with the suggestion by Mike and Pat, that we go along. So I'm supporting that.
Okay.
I don't think we're going to be going for the November meeting, the minority of the last step, for the November meeting, because we don't know what we're going to spend by then, we need to show that we spent
Right.
Probably asked for more money.
Okay.
And by doing, by spending closer to $1,000 by the time you meet, or you meet what you think, hopefully you're invited next month or April.
Oh, I will be.
So we can show that we spent
Right. Right.
So, we spent $985 for $150 for my town, we go, we call upon people for the Special Town Meeting, that's for $800 more to finish the other items, we need to get this, this the year, and that's the reason why we need $2,000 for following, so I think that the strategy and the plan is good.
Okay, all right.
Our next question.
Right, correct. We don't know, because we haven't spent it, before September 9th comes, we will not have spent all that money, because we meet on the 14th, that would be the time that we approve any money, that's already after September 9th. So I think that's, that's the best way to go. The Historical Commission, historically, has not spent a lot of money. So we have to prove that we are active and we are doing things with the funds that we get, it's kind of one of the issues that, you know, that we're facing, so. And also the town is in, you know, the financial situation that it's in, but we still have to fight for our money, but I think we have to say, we've spent our money. We have good things out there that we've spent our money on, it's a boon to the historical significance of Dayton and we need more. And I just think the timing is not working in our favor for November 1st.
So, so is there a window or time ago where we tried to spend roughly $1,000?
Between now and I would say March, yeah, yeah. And if you take a look at it, there are things there that we, that are in the works, we have quite a few things that are in the works to get done.
So, so we can come up with some, so at some point along the timeline, which of these, there's more than $1,000, so you pick certain ones?
Precisely, some of them are already, you know, committed, we're committed to, like the stand for the Boston Post King, the, you know, the renovation of that cabinet that we see, we're already committed to, so those things.
They're training too.
Yeah.
So there is someone, each month you're going to look at this list, you have to decide what you'll spend.
Right.
So that we have close to $1,000 by March.
Right. And this list is projected, it's not written in stone, it's what we have at the moment, this moment in time, so. Okay, any other discussion? All right, we'll move on. Oh, the other point that Mike did make is we talked about preservation planning and how in our budget, we don't have anything for the planning and use of consultants and he recommended that we continue to apply for CPC money for that function, because as we know, our grant that we got, the survey and planning grant for the community-wide update only covers a portion of the updates that we need to do in town, so it's an ongoing process, so we should go back to, he recommended to go back to CPC for more funding to continue that project. All right, moving on to the most exciting part of, it is our survey and planning grant for our title is the Dayton Community-Wide Historic Property Survey Update is the, the big title. The contract between the town and the state was signed August 12th by the Board of Selectmen and it's been mailed to the Mass Historical Commission and we should be getting a copy back, so that's done, that's one step done with that. We got the one response for our RFQ from Stacy Spies and I sent you the digital copy of that with a rubric and a professional qualifications sheets for your review. Does anyone have any questions on the rubric? This is what we're going to use to score the consultant. Sorry, Kim. So the plan is go through the packet, score according to the selection rubric, write your comments down, whatever you think is, you know, important to share and when we come back together on next Tuesday, the 31st, we'll go through it and we will, you know, put things together and make our selection from there. I will be contacting the references that are listed in, in the response from Stacy Spies. Next week on the 31st, Mike will be joining us to, you know, as we go through the selection. I have also invited Stacy Spies to Zoom in with us prior to our vote so that we can interview. I have not heard that from her yet. There any questions about the process? The last what?
The last date to receive these.
Was August 11th.
So in other words, we only got the one?
We only got one, yeah. I have no idea. I truly don't.
I'm surprised. I'm surprised there's only one.
I don't know. I couldn't even bathom a guess. All right, so everyone is good with the rubric, the process, I'll share the answers with the reference from the references on, next week, so that they're all part of our, our thought process. I also have to put together a solicitation package to the Mass Historical Commission for them to review before we hire the consultant. Once we get the approval from them, we can execute a contract. Mike will be working on a contract between the town and the consultant, which Ken, as the Chairperson of the Board of Selectmen, you'll have to sign again. And in this contract will include our scope of work. The goal is to have this done by September 10th or at the very latest, because the Board of Selectmen don't meet until September 15th for them to sign it on the 15th. So then we should be ready to go. Get the contract, you know, we have the consultant sign the contract and ready to go on the project. Are there any questions? A lot of details to it.
No.
We're good? All right. I'm excited. All right, there's no public here and okay. Also on our selection committee is Marina Santos, the Town Historian, so I will get, she has the information and I will touch base with her too, to make sure she doesn't have any more questions about it.
Okay, but there is no selection, because we've only got one.
We have to vote, yeah.
Oh, I understand, you know, technically you need to vote, but you either vote and get things going or vote not to lose her and get nothing done.
Right.
You have to start the process again.
Yeah. Yeah, so hopefully as everyone reads through, it, it's a good match, we'll see.
When, when, when do you think we will get the identification of a person to, well, I mean, you expect more than one person to apply to this?
No, it has closed, this is the only response we got.
It's too late, that's why I'm surprised, we're only going to get this one candidate.
Okay, and like I said, when are we going to know the identity of that person?
We know it right now.
I just want to make sure that it isn't the person that
No, you, you got my email yesterday with the digital copy.
Did you see the person in your email?
Yeah, I have it someplace, right, the identity in that paperwork.
Yes, yes.
Okay. And, and so And, and so
If, Phil, if you need a hard copy, let me know. And I'll get you a hard copy.
Like I said, I have a discussion at the Virtual Society with
Well, why don't you check the name and
Right, I'm not going to give you here.
No, but I'm saying, go through the packet. If you need a hard copy of the response that we received, let me know and I'll get you that. And once you see the name, you'll, you'll know. So, okay? All right. Nothing else? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn?
So there's a meeting on the Thursday course?
Yeah. 6:30.
6:30 here?
Yeah. All right. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn, oh. Rafa? Excuse me, say that again? Yes, yeah. Yes, yeah. And I'll be sending an, an agenda out with this on the link. Okay.
I'll make a motion to adjourn, because nobody else is coming.
All right, Pat?
Pat, wait a second.
Okay, oh, we need to vote. Pat? Aye. Roll call. Rafa? Bill? Pam?
Hi.
And I'm also an aye. Okay, thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.